I'd like to call the December 10th, 2014 meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item invocation, Ms. Etheridge.
Good evening. We need to be patient with our children in the same way God is patient with us. One of the most beautiful descriptions of patience in all of the classic literature is this from Bishop Horn. "Patience is the guardian of faith, the preserver of peace, the cherisher of love, the teacher of humility. Patient governs the flesh, strengthens the spirit, sweetens the temper, stifles anger, extinguishes envy, subdues pride. She bridles the tongue, restrains the hand, tramples upon temptation, and endures persecutions." Patient produces unity in the church, loyalty in the state, harmony in families and societies. She comforts the poor and moderates the rich. She makes us humble in prosperity and cheerful in adversity. She teaches us to forgive those who have injured us and to be the first in asking forgiveness of those whom we have injured. She delights the faithful and invites the unbelieving. She adorns the woman and approves the man. She is beautiful in either sex and every age. She rides not in the whirlwind and stormy tempest of passion, but her throne is the humble and contrite heart, and her kingdom is the kingdom of peace. Remember, when the opportunity arises, to be patient with your child. Consider how you would want God to respond to you in a similar circumstance. Thank you.
Could we please have a moment of silence now and keep in mind those people who are much less fortunate than we are, especially during this holiday season? Now, Principal Claire King will introduce the student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please raise?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. This month, the school spotlight is on Currituck County Middle School. Principal Claire King.
We've got our eighth grade chorus performing for us tonight into the direction of Mr. Al Cook.
If you want to be ready to sing, if you... If you want to ready go. If you want to be ready to sing, you must prepare the air, support the sound, let your vowels be round, keep your consonants clean, let your expressions be seen, so we can sing our song all day long. What you have before you is the eighth grade chorus at CCMS. The chorus is actually, if I would've brought them all, you wouldn't be in here because there's 185 today. So, it is a great group, it is an awesome group to be a part of, it makes up most of the school, over the majority of the school, so it is definitely the popular class, I would say. The kids have done amazing things just in the short amount of time that I've had them with, had with them since August when the school year started. We did a benefit concert for Currituck Kids right in October. We raised over a thousand dollars for Currituck Kids. Great to them, it was all for charity, so it was an awesome, awesome experience. We were even listed on the back of their t-shirt as one of the top sponsors for the event. Then, upcoming events, last night we had the sixth grade sang their portion of the Christmas concert at Central Elementary School for their light-up night. Tonight, we have the board performance. Next week, we have Wednesday, mark your calendars, the chorus presents Everywhere Christmas Tonight, a choral holiday spectacular. It is at CCMS at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. It highlights all of the students in the chorus. It is multicultural music from Christmas, the holidays, there's some pop tunes, maybe it's cold outside, a little bit of everything. I think the highlight of the concert is going to be the song, A Silent Night For All The World. And it is basically, the eighth grade will be singing Silent Night in German, and then it will be echoed by the seventh grade in Spanish, then it will be echoed by the sixth grade in Korean, and then they sing it in English at the end with the seventh grade singing it in African underneath that. So, I think that's going to be the highlight of the concert, I think the kids would agree. They, when I first gave them, they're like, "For real?" But I think they'll like it. They'll never admit that, but they like it. So, that's that. I want to show you a little bit of what the chorus is actually comprised of at the middle school. I can't say that these kids are solely mine and that solely they belong to me. They are, from basically everything that the school has to offer, I have in the chorus. So, chorus kids behind me, please raise your hand if you are at all affiliated with an athletic group. Any athletics. Keep your hand up if you are involved in Parks and Rec or travel sports. If you are a member of the Beta Club. If you are a member of Science Olympia, Battle of the Books, Making a Difference, or Kids Walk for Cancer. And I think the most impressive one that I can show off to you is please raise your hand if you are an A and B average student. It goes to prove that not only can they sing, they're smart, too. So, the, this is basically a culmination, this upcoming concert is a culmination of everything the kids have worked on since I started at CCMS last January when I left Moyaw. So, now that I'm getting ready to depart them and head back up north with Mr. Walls, we, the chorus is, this is kind of like their culminating experience. So, I hope you enjoy it. I'm going to share with you one more song. It is a Nigerian folk song called Noel Sing Noel. I have to plug it in first.
Sing Noel, sing Noel, sing we Noel. 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 Sing we all Noel, sing we all Noel. Sing we all Noel, sing we all Noel. Sing Noel, sing we all Noel. Sing Noel, sing Noel, sing we Noel. Sing Noel, sing we all Noel. Sing Noel, sing Noel, sing we Noel. Come and see the little babe born to us this starry night. Lying on a bed of hay, you will see the child of light. Sing Noel, sing we all Noel. Sing Noel, sing Noel, sing we Noel. Sing Noel, sing we all Noel. Sing Noel, sing Noel, sing we Noel. Mary Joseph, lend your aid, tend your baby at his birth. Angels singing all around, tell the news to all the earth. Sing Noel, sing Noel, sing we Noel. 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 Sing we all Noel.
Also, I think I forgot to tell you, they were actually also invited, and we're going next Friday night, to sing the tree lighting ceremony at Bush Gardens at Christmas Town next Friday night. So, very exciting, lots to do. So, hope to see you next Wednesday. If you have any questions, contact us at the school. Kids and parents, you are free to go in silent roar that way.
Mr. Cook, what a fantastic job you do with our students. It's absolutely incredible that we have that many eighth graders involved in, you know, chorus. Thank you again for working so well with our students.
Thank you. We love it. We have so much fun. It's probably not, we're not supposed to have that much fun.
That's good, we like it.
Did you say there's 185 total students at Currituck County Middle School involved in chorus?
In chorus, and then at Moyaw, we have about 210.
Wow, that's incredible. Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work.
He needs a favor.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, oh, and hopefully I won't butcher this name too bad. Cade Sigourney Yes?
Pretty close.
Pretty close?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Came pretty close. And they're going to do a 3D printing presentation.
Yes. Cade, what are you gonna draw?
I'm gonna make a house with a peaked roof in a matter of about a minute.
What we're doing, this is part of a program called Technology by Design. It's a state curriculum. The 3D printer actually is not part of this program, but it's something that Ms. Doughty purchased last year, she had some extra money. I had seen one at the school I came from, and I went to summer workshop, and I specifically went to see how these things work. When we got this thing six weeks ago, one of the first things I did, this was downloaded, GE actually uploaded this to a website, oh, excuse me, and I downloaded the parts to this, this is actually 13 different parts that the printer printed, and then we put it all together, and this thing moves, and it's a diagram of how a jet engine works. And this really started getting the kids excited in what this thing can do. They were hovered all around it, watching it print as it goes. Again, it's a 3D printer. But when we first started off making stuff, a lot of it was squares, rectangles, and the students were just learning how to use this software. The software that Cade is using is called Google SketchUp, and we actually use Google SketchUp Make in my classroom. We downloaded it for free off the internet, because nothing beats free, and we can use it forever this way. But at the high school, we're trying to really generate, my program is trying to really generate interest in technology to send them to the high school, so they'll take the technology courses there. At the high school, Ms. Doughty purchased, when she was CTE Director, Autodesk Inventor, which is one of the most powerful 3D software programs there is. Actually, that's what the GE engineers used to design this. And so, the students learn how Google SketchUp works, then they can go there and quickly pick up how Autodesk Inventor works, and they can design almost anything. Part of what my program's about is thinking outside of the box, creativity, and it's all project-based. So, we do projects most of the time, and then Fridays, this is kind of the reward, we get to work on designing something. And I don't have but a few things up here because the students take this stuff home. Once I print it, and some of these things take a while to print, gosh, this took 13 hours total to print, all of the different parts of this, but this probably took an hour to print. The, one of the things I had my students do, my sixth bell, was design a chess set. And they were each given a part of the chess set to do, and I don't know how well y'all can see it, but they turned out pretty good. The rook is almost perfect, the king and queen look pretty good, but they were working with having to learn tools that I didn't even know. I've got 110 students right now that are taking this, these, my six classes, I've got sixth, seventh, and eighth graders doing this, and I get to learn from 110 students as to what this software can do and what it can't do, and what this printer can do and what it can't do. I found out if this is hollow underneath when they make it, it just won't print. So, it's been a learning process for me, it's been a learning process for my students, and Cade has designed a house in just a few minutes. Now, what will happen, we do a design process where you, we ask, what is the criteria? What is it we want to do? And then we imagine, then we plan, then we create, then we try to improve what we created. So, Cade would look at this, and we may try to print this, he can turn it around, he can look underneath it, and we may print this and find out something's not right about it. We found out that if there's an overhang, the printer prints in like a spiral web, and it tended to do this. We found that out real quick on something. And so, Cade would then work on trying to improve on this house. And the whole idea is the design process, and again, my goal is to get students interested to go to the high school and take technology courses there. The 3D printer is really part of the future. You won't go to Lowe's Hardware anymore. By 2025, if you need something at home, you'll have one of these in your garage, your spare bedroom, you'll download the software to print the part that you need, and you can print almost anything. We've got a printer that's an educational model that prints with a plastic, it looks like really thick fishing line that feeds into it, it melts it and prints with it, but they can print with metals, they can print with really hard composite plastics, and so this is really the future that we're teaching the students.
I read a lot about 3D. Is Cade ready to print it?
Any questions?
Impressed. I was a vocational teacher for 30 years. I remember when the first CNC lathe came out, when the first milling, you know, milling machine came out, and basically, it was the same thing. What I saw in industry, there you go. What I saw in industry was, that's what the, you know, these major corporations are looking for, a kid that has a background in this. Go to Steel Chainsaw and see the parts that are being produced. This is how they're doing it.
One of the things I've seen advertised or heard it on the radio is they're starting to have people 3D design jewelry now. And you can sit down with somebody and design whatever it is you want, and that's when I got the idea for this, this says "I love you, Mom" on it. We can also put words on these things. It's for the kids to do something for Valentine's, and so they can design anything they want to do. And again, the limit is just what their mind can create as to what they can do.
I think it was Good Morning America, they had a guy that actually built a car.
Yes.
And there was only, I think, 17 man-made parts, and all the rest of it was 3D?
I want to think Purdue University has done that also, but there was a few parts that they just could not do because of the constraints on what that part must do.
I guess the medical profession, too, is making artificial limbs and...
What they can do, from what I understand, is they can make replacement jaws, they can do stuff like that. And I actually told somebody at this summer conference that anybody that they send to battle in Iraq, Afghanistan, if they just took x-rays of their face before they sent them, and if something happened to them horrible, they've already got what it looks like. They can have a 3D printer print an exact copy of what the innocent piece was and put them right back together just like they were. It's unlimited what these things are going to be able to do in the future. And for our kids to learn what they can do, some things they can't do, but also to learn how to produce what it is they can do, because that's where the real money is going to be in what Cade just did, being able to design. The printer, to operate it, I figured it out in five minutes. It was push a couple buttons and get it printing. But to be able to produce this is what's taken us a while, and it's been the real challenge for the kids. Some of them have jumped on this and they love it, some of them, it's not their cup of tea. But I'm hoping to get enough interested to go to the high school and really build, Mr. Rollers doing the same thing up at Moyaw. I'm hoping to really get enough interested to start a really great program at the high school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Cade, how long did it take you to learn how to do that?
It took me about five minutes during class one day, and I figured out how to make the house like that. Now, that's really basic. You can get much more detailed than that, but with limited amount of time, then you get that.
Yeah, I was kidding around at the work session today and said, you know, years down the road, if we need a new school, we might be able to do a 3D school. Thank you. Appreciate that presentation, thank you.
We'll let Cade design it.
Okay, next item, December 10th, work session review. At 4 o'clock, we had a work session, the first item on the work session was the swearing-in of the elected board members, and that was Ms. Etheridge, Mr. Simmons, and myself, who won reelection. Next item, we heard about school improvement plans from four of the schools, Moyaw Middle, Knott's Island Elementary, JP Knapp Early College, and Currituck County Middle School. Then, we received some information on school capacity levels from Superintendent Osman and Ms. Kinzel, the Assistant Superintendent. Then, we had a presentation on the 2015-16 school calendar from Ms. Kinzel. Then, we heard a program that students can get credit by demonstrated mastery, and they're going to start with 10th grade English. It's kind of, if you've ever heard of cleping a course in college, same thing. Then, we received a report and some estimates on bus cameras to catch people that pass stop-school buses, and Ms. Sweet said the one bus, how many?
I think she said seven.
Seven, they caught seven people last week passing a stop-school bus, and it was all on camera. And so, the board's going to consider in its next budget session, purchasing more cameras. Then, we received an update on the second reading of Policy 6125, administering medicines to students. Okay, next item on the agenda is the election of board officers, which takes action, and this is the point where I turn it over to Superintendent Osman.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. Do I have a nomination for chairman of the board?
Nominate Bill Dobney.
I second that nomination. Okay, I have a nomination in a second. Because Dr. Dobney has served as chair before, we will need to invoke Policy 2450, suspension of board policies. And do I vote on that, too? I need a motion to invoke that policy, please.
So moved.
In a second?
Back it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, we put Policy 2200 in place, election of officers, organization of board must be suspended with a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, for chairman of the board, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All of those in favor for Dr. Dobney as chairman of the board, please say aye.
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 Congratulations, Dr. Dobney.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have a election of vice chairman, and the policy's already been set aside in case Mr. Simmons is nominated. Do I have a nomination for a vice chair?
I would nominate Mr. Simmons. I would second that.
Okay, and the policy's already been set aside, so have a nomination, have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Simmons is now, once again, vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay, next, approval of the agenda. I would like to delete item C2, which is a student recognition of two students from the art department, and they could not both make it tonight, and so we're just going to set that aside for another meeting, but we will recognize them. Okay, after deleting that, do I have a motion in a second for approval of the agenda?
A motion, we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, recognition of National Board Certified Teachers. Ms. Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Chairman Dobney, members of the board, Superintendent Osman. It is a pleasure to be before you this evening for this particular item. Right around Thanksgiving, teachers who have submitted for the National Board Certification and have poured their blood, sweat, and tears into that process typically start hearing back from the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards, whether they have been approved or received that certification. Traditionally, around Currituck, December is the time when we recognize those who have either achieved their initial certification or have earned renewal. This certification, again, is a very rigorous process, as Ms. Kraft can attest to, but it also is a certification that follows the teacher for a 10-year period and affords them an additional, is it 12 and 1/2 percent or is it 12? 12. I think it's 12 percent bonus in their regular salary. So, again, there's some incentive behind that as well. Currently, we have 32 nationally board certified teachers in our district, and that equates to about 12 percent, and that's not bad for a small, little district of Currituck. So, tonight, I'd like to honor one Currituck teacher who received renewal of her certificate, and we'd like to bring her forward so that we can give her recognition for her hard work, and I'd like to be able to get a picture. So, if you'd like to come forward and help me with this, I'd appreciate that. And I'd like to bring forward Jennifer Barnes from Central Elementary.
Glad you're here. Sure. Let them thank you, too. I can add some wiggly.
Don't go anywhere, you've got to get a picture. Well, we brought these fine people out. Be surrounded. Just make sure that you're not looking at the back of somebody's head, Ms. Osman. There we go, thank you. All right, here we go. Thank you so much, Jennifer. She's not going to be so lonely next year.
I'm excited.
While you're returning to your seats, I just would like to inform the board and the public that we have two teachers that have taken on attending some informational sessions and are willing to provide that support. Ms. Kristy Hodges and Ms. Valerie Person will be hosting and facilitating a meeting next week for... for all kinds of interest people. So, uh, we've got people that are interested in initial certification, we've got people that are interested in renewing. And, um, so, and, and advanced candidates that have submitted and have to resubmit maybe one or two pieces so that they can become initially certified. So, I'm happy to say that we have over 20 people in the district that are going to be coming out and seeking information. So I hope that equates into more of our teachers getting certified.
One, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item, exceptional children, teacher of excellence. Doug Toll, Director of Exceptional Children.
Good evening. Good morning, good evening. Silence, good morning, evening. Student board members, good evening. Ms. Jones, good evening. It's great honor and privilege that we recognize one of our teachers tonight. The Department of Public Instruction of North Carolina seeks out recognition of teachers and staff members who go above and beyond the proficient and accomplished standards. Those who are distinguished. In November of this year, at the State Conference of the Exceptional Children's Department in Greensboro, we recognized one of our teachers at that conference, along with many others, in the exceptional children field. So the Exceptional Children's Department of Kurata County Schools recognizes one of their own tonight. I would like to recognize Ms. Tanya Tally. And Ms. Tally, if you could come up, please? And I've got a few things to read about her that I've put together and then in principle, Ms. Lasher have also put together. And then I asked her if she wanted to get her picture with the board as well.
Of course.
Absolutely. Ms. Ms. Tally is an intelligent and motivated individual. She's sort of known as a, as a EC teacher, but also as the Exceptional Children's Chairperson for Griggs Elementary. Um, and the Exceptional Children's Chairperson, and Ms. Tally's the only EC teacher at Griggs, in addition to all of her teaching responsibilities, has responsibilities of all the casework and caseloads of all the students. Griggs Elementary, um, population of exceptional children is close to 35 or so, which is the maximum for, that the state allows. So for the majority of last year and into this year, she's worked at the maximum caseload and has done it very well without complaining. She completes all of her required paperwork for the school and district in a timely manner. Uh, we run reports all the time and they're called time with placement reports. And we never have issues at Griggs Elementary and they're always compliant. And compliance in exceptional children's world is a big issue. However, her skills go much further than just paperwork. She's a team player. She's a member of the RTI team and school improvement team. She works closely with teachers to ensure her students' goals are being met. She's brought with her a wealth of knowledge and ideas for students and teachers. She's constantly researching innovative ways to reach her students. She is more than willing to provide professional development to the staff. Ms. Tally has mastered the art of being firm yet fair and having rules while maintaining relationships with her students. She has high expectations for her students and they have a clear understanding of their role in her classroom. She is an asset to the school, to the Exceptional Children's Department, and to the county. She works hard in developing academic and behavior plans for students. She is consistent and fair and builds relationships, again, with staff members, students, and parents. And then I talked about the caseload. Uh, for all those reasons, and then being in a, um, a difficult area to field, and is it 10 years? How long have you been in the EC? Quite a while?
Yeah.
Yeah, quite a while. Yeah, 15. So, you know, being that long, for all those reasons, Kurata County recognizes Ms. Tally as our EC teacher of excellence.
Okay, next item, PBIS recognition, Kurata County Middle and Moyac Middle School. Virginia Arrington, Administrative Services Coordinator.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, board members, and Mrs. Osman. I'm pleased to be here tonight to, um, present these green ribbon recognition awards to two of our schools. Green ribbon recognition is earned by holding consistent monthly meetings, earning a level one on the implementation inventory, which is completed by the schools, and earning an 80% on the school-wide evaluation tool, which is completed by me. Schools can earn the level one and the 80% by having an established PBIS team, setting and teaching expectations, attending training, sharing school-wide data, using data to identify tier one, tier two, and tier three students, implementing research-based strategies to support all students, and being successful. For this, um, each school receives a banner and a certificate. So I'd like to present these to Ms. King for Kurata Middle and Mr. Wallace for Moyac Middle.
Ms. Arrington, while they're coming up, you want to tell the, you know, viewing audience and the people here what PBIS stands for?
It stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. Thank you.
They want your picture.
Thank you. Okay, next item, recognition of holiday card winners. Ms. Kinzel?
Good evening again. Christmas and the holidays are always filled with traditions. And this is no exception because traditional, we are, I have a holiday card design. And I'd like to be able to share with you a little bit of the information about what was the criteria for the contest that we had students enter their artwork to be selected and chosen for our district's holiday card design. So if you'll give me a minute. All right, this annual contest is open to middle school and high school students. It's an open call, so, uh, students at JP NAP can also enter, and we've had winners from there as well. Uh, so it's not tied to an art class. Uh, we have, we ask them for original designs and they cannot copy from something that they see in print media or on the internet or anything else, so it has to be an original design. And, um, we'd like for it to be creatively unique to Kurata County. Uh, so that is part of the criteria. So this year, we have two winners, uh, because it's always hard to decide. And this is one of our winners' designs. Uh, because we use a program that electronically allows us to submit the artwork, we also have the opportunity to be able to enhance it too. So I'd like to be able to call up the two winners because as winners and having their artwork selected, um, they will not only receive, um, their original artwork back, we will give them copies of the card that just came in the mail from the printers this week. Um, we also will award them $50 for allowing the, the use of their artwork. Earlier before the board meeting, we handed out copies of the card's design. So you've got one or the other designed. So, um, I'd like to go ahead and have Tara Sensel come up and we'll recognize her. For Tara, we'll also receive a copy of her artwork as it's designed and framed, so you get that. But I know around this time of the year, it's always happy to have one of these. So we can get pictures, you know? Our second card design winner is Kaylee Greggs. And I believe she's here with us tonight. There she is. Uh, she designed, again, a very nice tree. We augmented what she submitted and we were able to put in, at the bottom of the card, a message of peace, which is something she had handwritten, but it didn't make the cut, so we submitted it electronically. So again, for her, we have. As well as original copies. And we have so much talent in our, um, in our midst. And, uh, the talents of the teachers, as you saw this afternoon or earlier this evening by Kyle Cook. And, um, this is the product of our teachers at the high school and specifically Ms. Claire Vinnick. And I believe she's here tonight. So I'd like to bring her forward and get her to be in the picture. Come on forward. We will be sending all of the, the cards out, both versions, one or the other, to all of our employees across the district. And, um, any leftovers will kind of hit some of our favorite neighbors in other districts to kind of show off the work as well. But anyway, so we want to thank you again, ladies, for letting us borrow your talents. All right, let me get you a picture.
Congratulations. Next item, student, school board member reports. Tonight, Mary Kate is going to do double duty for the high school. And Alexandra and Katie from Early College. Mary Kate, you want to start?
Yes, sir. Um, as Dr. Dobney said, I'm kind of doing double duty tonight because, um, Kurata High School has a lot going on this month as we prepare for the holidays and we're getting involved in winter sports. And Katie's the videographer for the basketball team, so she's away at Camden tonight. So I'm interested to see how they do tonight in their game. And, um, so I'm going to start off with the high school. And as for athletics, basketball, swimming, wrestling, and indoor track are underway. With victories versus First Flight and Northeastern, the CCHS Knights Wrestling Squad is currently sitting in first place in the Northeastern Coastal Conference. Please join us for all these sporting events throughout the month and throughout the winter months for, to support our athletes. Our band and chorus will hold their winter holiday concert, December 18th at 7:00 PM. Please be sure to join us for some great performances. Also, on a long overdue note, the CCHS Marching Knights ended their very successful season in November. Three of their accomplishments throughout the season include first place overall at the Edenton Peanut Festival, as well as the Struther Award for Best Overall Sportsmanship. And they also took second place overall in Class 2A at the Havelock State Competition. So they did really awesome this season. Juniors are, juniors are eagerly awaiting the arrival of their class rings, December 16th. I know I am at least. And, um, juniors will also have the opportunity to purchase their class rings at that time if they have not ordered one and so choose. Also, the faculty and staff of CCHS cordially invite you to our school cafeteria on Friday and for our holiday, um, community dinner. Um, in addition, in addition to a great meal, there will be an opportunity for community members to pick up clothing, toys, and other household items that may be needed. So we hope that you join us. I also am going to speak about what's going on at Shawboro. Um, Shawboro Elementary School had their Santa shop that was held last week. Friday, December 12th is Pyjama Day and Santa Pictures. December 17th is the Holiday Feast with Family. December 18th is the, are their class parties. And December 19th is the Holiday Sing-Along. And I also am going to tell you what's going on at Kurata Middle School. There will be a band concert on December 11th at 6:30 PM and a chorus concert December 17th at 7:00 PM. There will also be a daytime show for the chorus concert at 2:00 PM, so if any parents want to come and check that out. The eighth grade chorus will be singing a Bus Gardens Christmas Town on December 19th. And, um, I believe Mr. Cook shared all this with, with you guys, but this is another reminder. And, um, December 17th is also Ugly Christmas Sweater Day, school-wide at Kurata Middle. So all the middle schoolers need to break out their Christmas sweaters. On a side note, my mom, Claudia, is, um, in the, uh, goes to the middle school. And she said, hey, Mom, she asked her the other day, she said, uh, can I borrow? I know you have an ugly Christmas sweater, can I borrow one? So Mom was not too happy with that comment, but it was very funny.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of talking about Knott's Island Elementary School. And they will have the pleasure of attending breakfast with Santa on Saturday. So those lucky little children will get food and a very nice man to give them presents. What more could you want? Um, the Knott's Island PTA Bingo fundraiser that they hosted this past month raised $2,100, which is a lot of money. And they will have their Christmas presentation on December 16th. In Moyac Middle School news, Moyac Middle wants to congratulate two staff members that will be retiring at Christmas. They get to retire at Christmas. That's exciting. Like you, you leave and you don't have to come back when break ends, like, that's exciting. Art teacher, Ms. Lisa Doxy, who is amazing, and custodian bus driver, Kay Scott, who is also amazing. I went to Moyac Middle School, and so they will be missed. Um, the eighth grade will be taking a field trip this Friday, December 12th, to see a Christmas carol at Sea Away. And the Christmas band concert will be December 16th. So please come and join Moyac Middle School for that event. In JP NAP Early College, we have been very, very busy as we're wrapping up our first semester, which I'm stoked about. SGO has, uh, taken on the honor of sponsoring a kid from Kurata County for Christmas this year. Uh, all we know is that he's four years old, he has blonde hair, and we know his size. And we named him Cody. So, we don't know who this kid is, but we named him Cody. We raised over $100 to buy gifts for the family and, um, Cody this year because we wanted to personalize the gifts for the child. So they actually went to Walmart, uh, today to go purchase the gifts and they're purchasing some online at Amazon. But they just wanted to share that experience with you and say Merry Christmas to all the children. Um, we wanted to be involved in the community and we're really grateful for, um, Kurata County in helping us out with this. Um, and we're really excited to deliver the gifts next Thursday, so that'll be really fun. Uh, this Friday, students and staff will also participate in the Crazy Holiday Sweater Day. And prizes will be given for the very best ones. So if you have one, you should come because you could win something. JP NAP College Exam Week is this week, there's only three more days. I'm so excited. JP NAP High School exams and EOCs are next week. So good luck to all the students, uh, in their exams for next week, which are on a bell schedule. So if you don't have an exam, don't come to school. I don't think I need to say that twice because I'm pretty sure nobody wants to come to school when they don't want to, or when they don't need to. Um, JP NAP juniors will also be receiving their class rings on December 16th. And seniors will be meeting to order graduation cap and gowns with Herf Jones. And then January 5th is the start of second semester and report cards will be distributed at that time. Thank you and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, all that good stuff.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you had a great Thanksgiving and are going to have a good Christmas season. Um, I have the pleasure of announcing everything for, I think it's like four middle, no, four elementary schools here. I didn't realize how many elementary schools we had until I looked at this list. Um, there are lots of them, but they have a lot going on this holiday season, so we're going to share it. Moyac Elementary School had their family reading night on December 4th. The BOGO Book Fair also ran from December 1st through 5th. So I hope MES students took advantage of that. They also had their third grade holiday musical select yesterday. This week is also the Hour of Coding Week at Moyac, where all students will be doing an hour of coding with Lego, Lego lados in the computer lab. There will be, there will be a Student of the Month luncheon this Friday, December 12th. And December 17th, there will be a Holiday Feast in the cafeteria. December 19th will be the kindergarten presentation at 9:00 AM as well as the Holiday Sing-Along at 1:15. Those are like the funnest things ever in elementary school. I loved those. Um, Central Elementary School had their holiday play, December 2nd. They also had a true lighting ceremony last night with a visit from CCMS sixth grade chorus. Tomorrow, December 11th, is the Central Leader of Character Assembly. December 17th is the Holiday Luncheon during students' lunchtimes. And CES Holiday Sing-Along will be December 19th at 10:00 AM. I'm going to have to make sure to hit some of these. Greggs Elementary is having on December 16th. Griggs Elementary is having on December 16th, a senior tea and a Christmas program. And on the 17th, they're having a holiday feast. And for Jarvisburg Elementary, on November 17th, Jarvisburg hosted over 130 family members for their holiday feast provided by the expert JES Child Nutrition Staff. Students have also been reading liter, literally thousands, in all caps, thousands, of books to celebrate the Night of a Thousand Stars event in Corolla. December events will include a presentation of A Christmas Carol by third, fourth, and fifth grade students, an instructional basketball assembly, the annual Snack with Santa event, and a school-wide sing-along. So make sure you hit those this month and have a good holiday season, new year, all that good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we leave the student board members, Mary Kate, would you like to tell everybody about the milestone you reached?
Yes. As I shared with you guys last month at the board meeting, we had a very successful fifth annual North Carolina Kids Walk for Kids with Cancer. And I'm thrilled to say that through some donations that came in late and a donation from the CCHS Beta Club of $550, we have achieved our milestone of raising $100,000 over the last five years for childhood cancer research. And again, I couldn't do it without the support of everyone in the school system, the whole Currytuck County community. It's just, it's a really rewarding thing, and it's just awesome to have the community really support such an awesome cause. So thank you for all your help and thank you, community, for all your support.
Thank you. Like I've told you before, you ought to be very proud of yourself for what you do.
Absolutely.
And one of the other amazing things is 100% of the donations go to research. And is it the Sloan Kettering?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Foundation? Great. Okay, next item, field trip request. Ms. Scholler?
Yes, this is.
Ms. Osman?
Yes, thank you. This field trip actually occurred in November, but the Currytuck County High School Wrestling Tournament in Newport, North Carolina was held November 21st and 22nd.
Do you have a motion for approval? You have a second?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, school capacity levels presentation. Superintendent Osman and Ms. Kinsel.
Good evening again. Recently, we've had several questions about school capacity, and that's been a topic of discussion amongst our board and I know also the Board of Commissioners. So we wanted to give you an update tonight about that topic. And the last study for school's capacity was done in 2010, which has been a few years ago, by Smith Senate Architects. And since 2010, just as an overall view, there has not been, the trend has not been to see growth in enrollment across our school district. In fact, there has not been much growth at all in the last five years. So the trend has just been kind of even throughout those years. Since then, also, another change or another development has been that the General Assembly has taken away the class size cap, grades four through 12. So that means our classrooms can actually hold more students, which also changes our capacity levels. We've also implemented Chromebooks in grade six through 12, which means that we no longer need some of the spaces that we have for computer labs, and we're able to convert those back into classrooms if needed. So a few things have changed since our last study in 2010. Of the new developments in Currytuck County and the people that are moving in, many of those families tend to be retirees who don't actually have children coming into the school system. So although we see a lot of growth and developments around, that doesn't necessarily mean those households will be providing children to the school system. And just as a little background also, we do meet with the county planners at least twice a year, more often if we need to. They receive our school enrollment numbers every January. They look at the trend data. They also look at the developments coming into the county. And we meet to discuss our needs, again, at least twice yearly. So we feel like we're pretty current as far as future projections. Ms. Kinsel looked at our current school classroom sizes, number of rooms in our classrooms. And I'm going to turn it over to her so she can talk about the actual classroom space throughout the district.
Determining capacity is, is the important factor in deciding whether or not we need to, are we growing or do we need to look at other options for being able to house our students adequately across the district? And so these numbers were created based on some actual numbers. We started with the elementary and looking at this particular slide, we started with their actual enrollment. Because obviously, at that starting point, we have room for the students that are already in the building. Then I talked with principals or the assistant principals about what available space was in their building, that if tomorrow we had an influx of astronomical proportions, where would you put students? Where could you put them? And they gave me rooms that may currently be used for an individual teacher that's providing support instruction, or maybe it's a school psychologist that has, you know, moved into a larger space because it is more comfortable and it's a little bit easier to work with small groups than maybe having them in a smaller space themselves. So reclaiming some of those classroom spaces would be the numbers that are filled in with the second column. So based on an average class size, we looked at then, so if we filled those rooms that were available to an average class capacity, how many additional seats would that provide us at each school? So you'll see in that particular column, which is the fourth column over, and it has the red heading at the top, this gives us an approximate estimate of additional seat space or, you know, contributing to seats that would have been there if, you know, if we transformed the classrooms. So an example there would be that, just reading across, looking at Central's capacity. Enrollment as of November 5th was 162 students. There are five classroom spaces that could be available if need be, which, based on an average class size, and we use 24 at the elementary because of, the state requires a cap at, we cap that at 25, but our current average is about 22 in K3. And in 4 or 5, we have an average of about 26. So again, we're working off of averages. So that would give us approximately 120 additional seats at Central alone. So it would bring their total capacity up to near 300, about 282 students. So going through that particular process, we calculated school capacity for each of our elementary schools. I will make a note of Element, Knott's Island Elementary School, they have a much lower class size compared to all of the classrooms on the mainland. So what, starting with their, an enrollment number, which was far below what most of our average class sizes are, we then took their numbers and said, if we brought those classes up to average class size, then what would our capacity be based on those average class sizes? So you'll see a variance there on that particular line for Knott's Island. At the middle school level, we applied the same kind of logic in terms of what we have currently in our schools, and then looked at what would happen or where would we find additional classroom spaces. As Ms. Osman mentioned earlier, we have many labs at the middle school, primarily because at the middle school, they are tested at the state level on every grade level. And in some grade levels, we have three tests that are given by the state, and they're all online tests, not to mention the CTE classes that also have their own labs. We're not touching CTE labs. But we've had to add labs to be able to help with testing and the window so that it wasn't stretching out for lots of weeks. And so, in those particular cases, at Currytuck Middle School and Moyack Middle School, if we converted those labs back to regular classroom spaces, because the one-to-one initiative we have, then we could reclaim eight, eight spaces, some of which were vacant to begin with at Currytuck Middle, and four at Moyack Middle. And again, those would be primarily the lab spaces. Again, working off average class size right now at 27, we're estimating capacity at Currytuck Middle School at 558 students, and at Moyack Middle, 671. High school gets a little bit more complicated. At the high school, I'm going to skip down to JP NAP. We have plenty of capacity at JP NAP currently. We have 258 students enrolled, and their enrollment is capped by the New Schools Project, which is part of what regulates early colleges. Their philosophy is it's a small school environment, so at 300, we're capped. And we have capacity for 300, probably a few more or less if we needed to at JP NAP. So they're kind of out of the picture. Everybody boils up to the high school in this, in this district. We have multiple elementary schools that if we needed to, we could, we could look at redistricting. We could shift where students go based on the capacity we have and where the lines are drawn for attendance zones. The middle school, the same thing. We have some options because we have two schools, and we could probably redraw a line if we needed to. At the high school, we don't have any other options other than the Early College. And again, that's, that's very specialized. So what we looked at at the high school level is the current enrollment, but how we're utilizing the facility. That school was designed with three large multi-use rooms where teachers could place their belongings and have a place to go to work during their planning period, and give up their classroom space for another teacher to come in and work at it. So currently, right now, we're not utilizing that, that, to that fullest. So that brings up several classroom spaces that could be used for normal core classes. We're not talking CTE specialized classrooms, but we're talking about reclaiming some of those classrooms during the different bells. So looking across bells and how many, and calculating how many classrooms we could use during an off-bell time period, we could look at 37 additional classrooms. And then looking at filling it at 25, an average class size for the high school, and then, of course, dividing that across the four bells, that each student would not be, we didn't want to duplicate the numbers across all four bells. Then we're arriving at an average of about 231 additional seats at the traditional high school, at Currytuck County High School. So that brings our estimated capacity to about 1216. Those numbers seem, they are very relevant as we look at the next slide that Ms. Osman's going to walk you through as well.
In this next slide, we took four-year cohort data from the year 2014-15 all the way to 2023-24. And of course, that could change in all of those years. But if you notice, the estimated Currytuck County High School enrollment is way below what our capacity level is at this point. There is a little bubble that comes through 2016-17 at 1,013 students, but it's still below our capacity levels. Also, just to note, we are encouraging our students to go and take college-level classes at COA or online. So all of our students won't be sitting in an actual classroom every day. So we feel like we're in good shape across the district as far as classroom capacity. And at this time, can't recommend that we need a new high school as far as the space is concerned.
Do you want to tell them the statement that Mr. Woody made, the county planner, about how many houses he would take?
Yes, he, he said, based on the trend data, it would take about 1,900 houses to fill out our current capacity level in the next five to 10 years. So, and that, they calculate, and they're, they're constantly revisiting their formula also. And I can't remember, I don't want to quote the exact formula, but that's looking at the number of housing developments on the books and the number of children per household. So that's a large number.
Really?
Ms. Osman, what was the highest number we ever had in the high school? It would probably have been before NAP Early College was opened.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. When I was principal there, teachers shared classrooms.
Were we around 1,200 then?
And I want to say it was around 1,200.
And we had no portables then? We were not using portable classrooms?
At that point, teachers were using the workrooms. And it wasn't all teachers, but some departments were using the workrooms and actually sharing the rooms. So it's the way the school's built to be used.
Other questions?
No.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Nobody signed up for the public comments session, so we'll skip that. Next information items, our next work session will be January 14th, 2015, at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 5:00. Our next board meeting will be January 14th, 2015, right here at the Historic Courthouse at 6:30. Next item, board member comments. Ms. Etheridge?
Yes, just to bring the public up to date, today, we were able to meet at Jarvisburg Elementary at 11 o'clock this morning, and got to talk to a lot of the teachers and students. The students were very engaged in the classrooms. They've been working on a lot of projects. A lot of artwork was displayed in the hallways. That was a real treat for us to see. Then we traveled on to Jarvisburg, I mean, Griggs Elementary after that. We were able to eat lunch at Jarvisburg before going to Griggs. And then, same thing, we got to talk to a lot of the teachers, students. And then we went to Shawboro Elementary, and we were able to meet with Ms. Godfrey, and she showed us around a little bit. And so we've had a really busy day, fun day, but we got to, to visit with a lot of the students and the teachers, really enjoyed that. Just want to tell you that we're so proud of all our teachers and our students and principals. I think we've got the best school system in the state of North Carolina. And I can tell that they love, they love these kids, they love the students. Their heart's in it. It's not in it for the money, that's for sure. They're in it because of their love for their students. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Safe holiday. Please be careful on the roads. A lot of people out there drinking and driving, texting and driving. Please be careful and love your kids, love your families, and cherish every minute with them. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
I had a chance to go see Buddy White's play. It was called?
Reckless.
Reckless. We were trying to remember the name of it. What a wonderful job he did again with all the kids from Currytuck County High School. Last night, I had a chance to get down to Jarvisburg Elementary and see the Christmas carol. Kids did a great job with the chorus group. I want to say I thank you today, and I want to say thank you to our Sheriff's Department, Susan Johnson. This morning, I got up early, took my daughter to school. I went by NAP Early College, and there was a police officer sitting in front of it. I went by the high school, and there was a police officer sitting in front of it with the blue lights on so people would slow down. I left there and I went by Central Elementary. There was a police officer sitting in front of our school so people would slow down. Ladies, we've got a sheriff sitting here in the back of the building. I want to say thank y'all to our Sheriff's Department. They do a good job helping in our schools. I know I've gone by Shawboro Elementary School where we have a deputy sometimes who will just come in and talk to our kids. So I want to say thank you to our Sheriff's Department. They do a great job. Merry Christmas to everybody. Enjoy your break. Teachers have earned it. Thank you.
Ms. Kraft?
Yes. I've been busy this month, too. I went to Knott's Island's Fall Festival, Jarvisburg, and Shawboro Elementary School's Veterans Day. And man, what a, what a tearful time that was. Happy, but just very much, the children were very much aware of what they were doing and what the honors that they were placing upon those people. Went to the play, Reckless. Went to Griggs Elementary and saw their PBIS awards, basketball game at Moyack against Currytuck County Middle. That was neck and neck. That was pretty good. And went to JP NAP's Dog Club where they go and walk the dogs at the SPCA. And that was fun, too. So it's just been, just been a great week. And Mr. Simmons, they are there every day. I go to the Y three days a week, and I'm coming back by. And all those schools that you mentioned, they're always there. So I, too, appreciate them and want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Ms. Gattis?
I've been busy, too, since the last board meeting. I also attended the Fall Festival. Actually, with my daughter being there, I got to run one of the games at the Fall Festival as a parent rather than a board member, so that was fun. I also got to go to Knott's Island Elementary today as a special reader for the first and second grade combination class. Got to read a Christmas book. November 24th, I visited Currytuck- November 24th, I visited Currituck Middle School, walked around the classrooms. One of the ones I stopped in, of course, was Mr. Cook's chorus class, so I got to actually watch the song they performed tonight being practiced, along with some others. But got to see a bunch of teachers in their daily lives with their students, just really enjoying themselves. I also intended, or visited the high school, trying to see classrooms, but I happened to show up the one day where they combined all the lunches for all the grades at one time. So nobody was teaching, but I will say that it looked so military in there that these teachers had, I mean, they had it under control with all of those kids. It was very impressive, to say the least. The kids, of course, were well behaved, but just to see the precision that our administration puts in place to make sure that we get our kids in and out of those classrooms in the amounts of times that they need to be done. I also attended Jarvisburg on that same date, got to see the Thanksgiving decorations, visit classrooms, things to that effect. What else? Went with the group today. Also, and this is my fault, Alex didn't say this because she asked me if I knew of any additionals. Knott's Island Elementary has their holiday lunch on the 17th. So any parents or grandparents have been invited to attend the cafeteria. That's to join. The Sheriff's Department also has a police officer in front of Knott's Island Elementary every morning also. So they are covering all bases, including the one that's so far, far away. I want to say happy holidays and happy new year to the community. Also, just on a positive note, Facebook, I know you see so many negative things about Facebook, and we all talked about this earlier. There's been a great movement on our Currituck Sportsman page of seeing people in our community stepping up to help some of the other families in need in our community. It has been phenomenal to see, and I just want to thank anybody and everybody that has been involved in that because I know that there are families out there that need this support, and it's been great for our community to pull together to do that. Thank you.
I'd like to start by thanking the board for the faith that you have in me and electing me chairman once again. I was on the tour today at Jarvisburg, Griggs, and Shawboro. And as all the board members will tell you, we just stopped in the schools unannounced, and we saw nothing different today than we always do. Students engaged, learning going on, great teaching. I also wanted to play reckless, unbelievable. Buddy White did a great job. Saw the last part of the Veterans Day celebration at Jarvisburg. And I'd like to close by wishing everyone a safe, happy holiday season. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor?